Okay, now we're recording, Chris.
You good?
Yeah.
You sure?
No. Well, it says record, so it's usually.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll open up this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. Today's date is July ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and the time is seven oh one P M. Uh, here in Town Hall, we have four members of the planning board present. We have two members of the planning board present online. Um, please note, this meeting is being held uh in hybrid format, which means that members of the public or applicants or planning board members can participate here in Town Hall or virtually through the Zoom link. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. Uh, since we have members of the board that are participating online, I'm just going to uh check on roll call for the online members. Uh, Annette, uh, can you uh just acknowledge yourself and ensure that you can participate tonight?
Yes, Annette Aravidian is here, present.
Thank you, Annette. Natalie, would you mind doing the same?
Natalie Robert is also present.
Thank you, and I, I presume both of you can participate fully tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, okay, so let's turn to item uh two, the public hearing for one power mill road. I will, I will um open up the continuance of the hearing for one power mill road. Uh, Bill guns, or would you mind, um, briefing the board on the staff?
Certainly, uh, the applicant, um, Mr. Chang is, do you can hear him, Mr. Chang? I think you're on mute.
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. Um. I got, I received your uh request to withdraw your planning board application, is that correct? For both special permit and and uh site plan?
Yes.
And just to give the board a little background, uh, this was part of a um, a uh, it's originated with the zoning board of appeals. The applicant is requesting overnight storage of vehicles um. At the time when the application came in, um, the applicant was um considering a, a, a imminent expansion of what is currently illegal, non-conforming use. Now that would require this board's approval as a filling station or as a fuel distribution station. Um, right now, um, after discussing with Town Council, the building commissioner, and among both the planning board chair and the zoning board chair, um, uh, and the applicant. Uh, it's, we figured, it's in the best interest of the applicant, the town, uh, for um, Mr. Chang to uh withdraw his permit to the planning board at this time, concentrate on the zoning board and seeing how it goes there, and then at a future date potentially applying when he's ready to make uh a full application to the board. To, just to give the board a little background on what would, that would require, um, because it is a potential environmental issues as well as opposed to downtown overlay issues, bringing um a, a fuel station into compliance from um start. It could be quite involved, and at this point, it didn't seem that it was achieving the goal, so um, that was the reason why staff uh consulted the applicant, and we recommend uh and request the board vote to accept the withdrawal of the application.
Any questions on the board regarding this?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion to allow withdrawal uh from the uh, and, and below schedule?
Left, very mistaken, Jim. Uh, I'll second that. Uh, any further discussion before we take a vote? Uh, Natalie and Annette, I will uh do roll call for voting as well. Um. Okay, all in favor to support the withdrawal, uh, we're gonna do roll call. Uh, we'll start with here in the room.
Yes.
I vote yes. Jim?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Thank you all. Um, okay, that's five zeros for the withdrawal without prejudice.
Mr. Chang, I'll be inside shortly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Move that we hold bigger. Thank you, Jim. I'll second to close the hearing. Um, roll call for a close to hearing vote. Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Thank you both. Hearing's closed. Um, okay. Uh, Bill, are you ready to move to, move on to item three?
Yes.
To eleven Main Street?
Yes.
All right, I will reopen the hearing for the continuance of the public hearing for eleven Main Street. Uh, this was a petition um to update the site plan and for special permit um at the property of eleven Main Street in downtown Overly District. Uh, Bill, do you want to give us a briefing on this, and then we'll turn it back over to the applicant?
Yes, the uh, the board um opened this uh hearing, uh, I think this is the third reiteration. Um, this is a uh expansion of, of Emerson Hospital Medical Offices. Um, they want to modify uh the two thousand eight special permit site plan to expand the medical office use uh on the property. It's uh requesting parking relief um and uh, which is an expansion of what's currently there, but it's still under what is required by um zoning bylaws. Um, as part of the uh project, uh, the town uh requested and the applicant agreed uh to provide an ADA accessible uh pathway from the parking lot into the municipal parking lot. Uh, that will be facilitated uh through a separate agreement with the select board in coordination with D P W. But uh, the planning board, um, I would recommend uh would make it a condition of approval of their um of approval if they're inclined to do so. So with that, we have um our uh town consultant uh on this is uh Mr. Scully, Bill Scully uh for Kedley Horn who's attending. Uh, we have uh uh, Dylan Lemononi and uh Annie Gorman both representing the applicant, and Mike Wilcox, I think, yeah, um. There are uh some adjustments that were made to the site plan, which I printed out, you have in front of you there, uh, that reflected uh changes by um with uh the board and uh Mr. Scully, and I'll let uh Mr. Um let the applicant, however he wants to present, I think there's new changes. So that, David, I'll leave it to you. I think you have, uh, I gave you co-hosting, so you should be able to share a screen.
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Bill. Um, and thank you, uh, members of the planning board. And again, sorry I could not be there in person tonight. I'm, I'm um out of state dealing with a family emergency. Um, so as, as Bill mentioned, uh, we were before the board a few weeks back, um, and uh, we received some minor comments from Bill Scully through his uh peer review. Those comments have been um addressed and were really about some, some minor improvements to the site plan on the eleven Main Street property itself. Um, and uh, in addition to that, we've also, you know, since the last hearing, we've been working very closely with uh town staff and D P W to um ensure that the pedestrian path is uh ma- modified and cited in a manner that, you know, makes the most sense, given some of the the site constraints that are there, and, and I think we all took a visit to the path after that meeting to um, to, to um, take a look at and see the conditions there. So um, we've worked, we've worked um the past couple of weeks to, to refine that plan. And um, you know, we're, we are, you know, also anticipating going before the select board next week at their hearing to um, you know, kind of all memorialize this in a maintenance agreement with the, with the select board at that time. So I'm gonna bring up the updated site plan that we've now submitted. Um, and our, our engineer from V H B, Annie Gorman, can take you through just a couple of the changes, both the changes that Bill Scully had identified in his um peer review comment letter that we've addressed, as well as the um the changes to the pedestrian path itself. So let me just bring this up, and Annie, you can just guide me as I um, as I take, you know, you can take us through this. So just a sec. Okay, so let me zoom out here. Um. Again, existing property here is outlined in blue. The um, Summer Street is up here, and the municipal lot is, is right here. So Annie, if you want to take it away, feel free.
So we'll do, um, thanks, David. Again, Annie Gorman, V H B, uh, civil engineer for the project. Uh, so starting with the updates that came out of the uh peer review, we added a detail for the speed bump. We added signage adjacent to the speed bump as well, um, warning signage. Uh, we added signage at the Summer Street curb cut um with double-sided signage with do not enter facing Summer Street and a, a stop sign at the exit approach for the parking spaces. Yeah, these speed bump details at the top, David.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, here's the speed bump. Uh, for the compact parking spaces, the parking spaces with the uh minor length adjustments, we added signage um designating them as compact parking spaces, and then we added um some striping for the pedestrian connection from the pedestrian path to uh eleven Main Streets, main entrance there. So those are the, the changes to the site, and then after reviewing existing conditions um in the field with uh members from the D B W, we um decided that removing the existing dilapidated uh retaining wall along the property line um made the most sense, and centering the pedestrian path in the landscape island between the two parking lots um would allow for uh better visibility between the two parking lots. Um, we would really clean up the existing overgrowth in this area. Uh, we would reset some of the existing vertical granite curb. Uh, what we really like about this is we were avoiding the um E V charging station and the uh infrastructure that's associated with, with that, uh, and avoiding that existing drainage that is in the corner of the, the parking lot right there. So those are the major changes. Um. That's all, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman. Um, thank you, thank you, Mr. Libradoni. Sorry, David, do you have something to add?
No, no, I just um, just want to say, you know, happy to, to um, you know, answer any of the board's questions at, at this time.
Great. Um, yes, please, let's turn it to the board for questions and comments. Uh, Annette or Natalie, feel free to speak up or use the raise hand feature, and we'll, we'll get your comments in. Any, anything here, guys?
Yeah.
I'm good.
I'm good as well, man.
Um, Ms. Gorman, you mentioned uh that the compact car spots have um some type of signage. Is, are the signage, is it S two that's labeled on the ground? Is that what you're referring to as the compact labeling?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's, yeah. Oh, no, so these will be posted?
Yeah, they will be posted.
Oh, I'm, I never mind. I got my orientation got screwed up. I'm, I'm seeing it now. There are, I see them on signpost. Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um.
Um, Chris, the only thing, if I may, the only thing I was gonna ask about was the, I know that you're gonna remove a lot of the scrub vegetation that was there, but I do believe that there is a mature, you know, a tree that um we were hoping to keep, but I think it's gonna have to be taken out. What's the plan for, is there a plan for planting something else there, or?
Yeah, so we will have D P W on site as we're removing the vegetation, and yeah, we will do what we can to work around the existing mature trees. Um, and then depending on what um we can keep versus what we need to remove, we'll work with D P W to kind of replace uh what is there in kind or um.
Great, I would love, I mean, if you're willing to, uh, you know, maintain the same number of trees, I mean, you know, within reason in terms of, I don't know what the, some of those trees are not, you know, um, then that would be great.
Um, Mr. Libradoni, we have a tradition at the planning board here to uh ask that all trees that need to be removed get replaced in kind. And then typically uh defer to D B W and the tree ward and the tree committee to determine what in kind uh means, and um, we typically condition that. Would that be amenable on your end if we conditioned that any tree that needs to be removed for construction will be replaced in kind?
Uh, I defer to, to Mike on that. Mike Wilcox.
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
We'll comply with that.
Um, in the past, and I, I can't speak how D P W will view this, but in the past, they've replaced them in, you know, a- as close to possible to the site itself, but it might be, you know, in a tree well on a sidewalk nearby or something similar to that. Uh, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, and again, as Andy said, we'll just work with D P W and whatever their guidance is, we'll, we'll work to fulfill that.
All right, thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
Um, hearing, no other comments. I'm gonna open this up for public comment. For members that are online, uh, please use the raise hand feature or uh show yours, show yourself on video and, and please raise your hand, and we'll call on you. For those members in here in Town Hall, if there's a public comment, um, please, please let us know. Yes, please, if you could, just identify yourself first.
Um, Marie Goddardson, one nineteen Park, and um, I mean, I don't have any issue with the plan itself, but uh, I, I, it's, is there any markings? Like, I assume those crosshatch areas are intended to be no parking?
Um, so uh.
I'm happy to bring up the plan again, if you want to just.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Libradoni. If you and Ms. Gorman could just walk us through the hatching and what uh, what the references there.
So this, this area first, go ahead, Annie.
I was just gonna say the hatching does designate uh no parking in both of those areas.
Uh, my question is because I've seen this around town in front of the post office exactly. Is there any signage to tell people that it means no parking, not, I need to park here so I can get there? Um, and also observing people ignoring the signs in and out of C V S and in and out of um, one, one twenty-nine Parker next door to me in the wrong direction. Is there any? Do we enforce those rules at all?
Um, I'll answer the second question first. Um, enforcement, uh, this referred to the police department and other entities in town. It's not a planning board item, of course. Um, regarding signage, uh, we typically ask that signage is uh through best practices. Um, and we would ask D P W to advise on how signage is marked for non-parking spaces. Um, did, Ms. Gorman, can you just confirm that the hatched areas do not include any additional signage for no parking?
Or any dairy?
We do, we are not um including signage at this time.
We would defer to D P W uh how they want things done when it comes to this typically. Um, any other comments for tonight? Um, hearing, hearing no comments from the board and no additional comments from the public. Um, Mr. Libradoni, we, we asked that if there's any additional information that you would like to enter before we make a motion to close.
Uh, no further information.
Um, and Bill, can you remind us of the, the, the additional request? This is a special permit um for, but there's a parking relief request.
There is a parking relief request. I'm, I'm brought that, and I, I want to make sure the numbers are still as um or, David, can you run through the, the original request was uh for it was relief with an increase, I guess.
Yeah, I have, I'm happy to run through the specific relief for, because it is a little, it's, it gets a little technical. Um, so the first is an amendment to the two thousand eight decision, you know, site plan special permit decision to modify the parking waiver that was granted at that time. Um, the, the second is to modify the site plan that was approved in the two thousand eight decision with this, you know, modified, you know, parking lot site plan. And the third are um four different um uh standards of relief that we're asking for from the zoning bylaws parking standards. Um, and that, and they're all geared towards um, you know, kind of reducing the uh the size of the spaces in order to, one, you know, maximize parking on site, but also to maintain a minimum twenty-foot wide um driveway aisle through the site, which is um what we need to comply with um state um uh fire code uh accessibility requirements. Um, and those are outlined in, in our, in our letter submission, the, the specific um zoning relief standards. Happy to go through in more detail, but that, that's generally what um the, the relief for we're seeking tonight.
So uh, just if I may ask, I just to be clear, are they, they're the same as in your May thirteenth letter?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Um, Bill, would you mind pulling those up on the screen just so that before we go, everyone knows what they're voting on?
Do you have them handy, David?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
All right.
Um. So the first two bullet, the first bullet point is what I just mentioned about the parking waiver. So the waiver is currently ten spaces under the two thousand eight decision. We would be increasing this.
Mr. Libradoni, you mind zooming in a little bit, please?
Sure.
Just to fill this with the text.
Yeah.
Maybe one more, a little more. Thank you, that's, that's.
Um, so the first, again, as I, as I mentioned, modifying the existing parking waiver from ten spaces to twenty-six parking spaces. Um, the second is to update the, you know, the two thousand eight decisions approved site plan with this parking site plan that we just reviewed this evening. And then the third is uh relief from the bylaws parking standards. Those are outlined here, and there's four specific standards that we're seeking to modify.
Can you leave that there for one second, please?
Yes, yep.
So the first is to reduce minimum length and width of seven spaces, angled spaces. The second is to reduce the minimum width uh of maneuvering aisle, the two-way to twenty feet. Third is to re- to reduce the minimum length and width of three ninety-degree angled spaces as shown. The fourth is to reduce the minimum width of three accessible parking spaces at the property.
Okay.
Any questions on um these, the relief here for these four, I, four standards? And I believe, Mr. Libradoni, these were, as I recall, these were discussed in the previous hearing as well.
Yes, yes, they were.
All right, any questions on the request, full request for relief from any members of board? All right, um, anything else to add, Mr. Libradoni, before we motion to close?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, oh, so, sorry, I wanted to turn it to, to Bill Scully real quick. Mr. Scully, can you just confirm, and I saw your letter that uh that we, that peer review was completed, and there's no many items, but for the record tonight, can you just confirm that that's correct?
Uh, yes, and uh Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bill Scully with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Uh, yeah, so we did uh coordinate with the applicant's engineer, reviewed the uh comments we had at the previous meeting, um documented them and uh reviewed the changes, uh, and they've addressed everything that we had commented on.
Thank you, Mr. Scully. Um, prior to this, prior to opening up the hearing tonight, um, I was curious about what the letters R S P stand in your signature line? Would you help me understand what R S P means?
R S P, oh, road safety professional.
Road safety profession. I, I guess it was remit, you should safety profession, but I was wrong.
Just, uh, it's a certification, uh, a little bit like P E, but focused on safety.
Hey, I, I love it. Safety first, right, Mr. Scully?
But David? Uh, one other thing, I, I think would, would, might help with the word, hard, real quick, um. This, because this is a renewal. This is a renewal of the existing um without renewal, I'm sorry, or a um modification to the existing uh special permit. Uh, if you might want to run through the special per- permit criteria contained in your letter. Well, it was since you have it, if you saw that handy, it was right at the next page.
Sure.
Like that, how we believe, the applicant believes they made special permit criteria if your board needs it.
I, I think it's fine to cover it, yes.
So we went through, um, we went through this at the last hearing, but happy to, to go through again. Um, so the, the first criteria, you know, the social, economic, or community needs which were served by the proposal, you know, big picture, this is this zoning relief will allow for the expansion of Emerson's medical office use in downtown Maynard, which we feel will be of great benefit to the downtown and, and um help drive economic activity there by having a real uh anchor tenant in the center of the town. Um, the uh, in terms of traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, um, we've obviously spent a lot of time um reviewing this, and, and some of the zoning relief we're asking for is geared towards public safety, both for pedestrians crossing the site as well as vehicles um maneuvering through the site. So that's why, you know, maintaining that twenty-foot wide access aisle, for example, um, having the additional accessible parking space on site and, and, and obviously the pedestrian connection to the municipal lot, which will, we anticipate will be utilized by um visitors and employees of, of Emerson. Um, adequacy of utilities and other public services, um, you know, there's no changes to what are, what is uh, you know, happening on site today in terms of that. Um, similarly with the neighborhood character and social structures, um, we're not making any changes to the existing building. This is all changes to the um, the exterior and the pedestrian path we're proposing will really um be consistent with the goals of the downtown overlay district to um, increase, you know, pedestrian connectivity in downtown. Um, the um impacts on natural environment, um, you know, other than the, the um the parking lot work that we'll need to do for this, um, we will, uh, you know, there's really gonna be minimal impact on the neighborhood. As you heard earlier tonight, we'll make every effort to preserve the existing trees that are in that corner of the property, but if not, um, if, if those trees need uh to be taken down to allow for the path we will replace in kind. Um, so that they um, there should be really no minimal impact to the, minimal impact to the natural environment. Um, and the final c- criteria, which is um potential fiscal impact, um, you know, this having Emerson take over this whole building will increase its value, increase the tax base um for, for the town. Um, for, in terms of the downtown overlay district, there's an additional criteria of, um, you know, we're gonna be able to utilize more public parking um with this use by having the pedestrian path as a connection. So um, we, we feel this is very, very strongly in it, consistent with what the downtown overlay district was all uh meant to be about.
Thank you, Mr. Libradoni.
Yep.
There's no, if there's nothing additional, um, I will make a motion to close this hearing. Second. All right, um, we'll do roll call for, for hearing closure. Um. Here in Town Hall, Jim?
Yes.
Um. Are you voting on this? Bill, who's voting on this one?
Uh, everybody except um Bill Crunchout. Uh, everybody except um, Bill Crunchon.
Okay. Your vote?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, yes, Natalie?
Yes.
Annette?
You're muted, Annette.
Yes, thank you, Natalie. Did you get that? I said yes.
Yes, thank you, Annette, yes, we heard you.
Thank you.
Um, alright, I, I, Bill, I'm gonna structure this as two votes, one is special permit criteria. And two will be the approval of the modified site plan with the uh waivers. And the four standards as noted in the, in the May letter from the applicant.
And special.
That will be the first. First vote will be special permit, second vote will be the site plan. Um, approval, modified site plan approval with the waivers and the standard modifications.
Got it.
That make sense?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to find that the uh applicant, the application that was presented in this hearing. Was consistent with the special permit criteria for in sections nine point four and sections ten point four of the zoning bylaws.
Sorry about.
Um, so this will be a vote for special permit, uh any discussion on special permit criteria from the board? Okay. Um, so we'll take roll call on the vote for special permit criteria, Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Uh, I vote yes, Natalie?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Okay, that's five zero in support of the special permit modification.
Okay.
The second motion, um, I move to approve the modified site plan. Including the modification of the parking waivers. And the four standards that were presented tonight and included in the, what's the date on the letter?
Uh, May thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
The May thirteenth, twenty twenty four letter presented by the applicants.
And you want to say, do you want, excuse me? Um, if I may, sure, yes. Um, do you want to add the conditions, the condition of approval about the trees and the uh execution of the maintenance agreement?
Yes, thank you. Um, and the conditions on this um, motion include. The first would be that uh any tree that needs to be removed during this construction of the modified site plan. Will be uh replaced in kind, uh as determined by the Department of Public Works. And who, who represents, who is represented by the tree warding. The second condition.
What was the second condition? Uh, second condition is the, that the applicant will execute an agreement with, with the order select board and D P W for the.
Right.
Maintenance and accessibility of path.
The second condition is that the um applicant will execute a. Um, an access agreement, access or maintenance agreement?
It's a maintenance agreement.
Thank you, Mister Libradoni, um, that the applicant will execute a maintenance agreement with the select board and the town of Maynard. Um, as part of, of, part of this approval.
And I would also recommend to you that all previous approvals uh remain in effect that are not modified by this order.
And all in this uh, the site plan modification vote will include that all previous.
What?
All previous conditions that are, are still applicable unless modified by this action of the board. Include the special permit or second. And all previous conditions uh will still be applicable as discussed. Um. Do I have a second on that?
Yes, you do.
Thank you, Jim.
Sorry, Jim.
Um, any discussion on that motion from the board? Okay, um, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes, uh Natalie?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Okay, um, that's five zero for approval of the modified site plan with the other conditions and waivers. I believe that is all for tonight. Uh, Jim, would you like to do the honors?
Yes, I'd like to move to closer hearing.
Thank you, Jim, I'll second that. All in favor to close, Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
I vote yes. Natalie?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Thank you, Mister Libradoni, um, Ms. Gorman, Mister Scully, Mister Wilcox, thank you all for attending tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Mister Chair, Natalie's gonna hop off, she has a, an event and uh, Bill, uh will resume his seat.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thanks for coming in, I appreciate it.
Bill, now, are you ready to move to fourteen sixteen Hillside?
Yes.
Does anyone need a break?
No.
Um. I will uh reopen the public hearing uh for fourteen sixteen Hillside Street, this is a continuance from. Uh, June eleventh, two thousand twenty four. Bill, do you want to brief us on this, and then we'll turn it over to Mister um Justin Chianowski, did I get that correct again?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
And so, so, uh, when we left uh last time, Mister Chianowski um was uh. Going to, uh, return with some modifications to the site plan. Since that time, um, we've been in contact um with the Conservation Commission. And he's, I believe, filed an application with the Conservation Commission at this point, or?
I filed part of the application, yeah.
And it, uh, but the, in the end, the, the goal is to simultaneously. Run the petitions together, and the reason the Conservation Commission um has been um involved at this point. Is because there is the potential of, for uh additional parking added to the back. Which would um. Uh, altered land to a level where the Conservation Commission would be involved. With that, I, I asked um, uh, the applicant to come in tonight to give you an update, so you knew where he's at. Um, I have not received, w- w- no new plans have been submitted that um, and to this point, I don't, I think we're at three units. Or, okay, but I'll let you, I'll turn it over to Justin.
Yeah, absolutely, so uh, we've been working with Conservation Committee um over the last month. To um, better align any needs of that uh commission with the planning board. Make sure that we're kind of doing everything in sync. Um, we were gonna have to touch the driveways at some point to just reset them or whatever, and even that would require us to work with Conservation Commission. So it made sense to just bring it in now, uh, it's gonna, it's kind of slows things down, but I think it makes sense uh overall. Um, we have put together a plan that would allow for um five parking in the rear. Um, and it would be. Four of the spots would be uh two in tandem, two in tandem, and then one separate, and that would meet the requirements of the parking. For uh the planning board and for the special permit. Um, and we're just working through on the plan, things like screening and um. Uh landscaping and uh trees, et cetera, that we would want to put in to help with uh runoff. And all the things that Conservation would be looking at, and then just making sure that it's fully submitted. Um, the original plan was to submit for uh the July twenty second meeting. Which would coincided with the planning board meeting, um, but we're gonna have to push that and we'll submit for the um. What was gonna be the August twenty second meeting, which I now understand just uh earlier today, that that's getting pushed to September tenth for conservation. Um, so I don't know if the planning board has a meeting that day, but the idea was that possibly we would go in front of Conservation Committee. Uh, I think their meetings are at six, and then come back um to your meeting afterwards, I don't know if that's gonna line up. Uh, but in general, my plan would be to come back to you all, uh possibly at your next meeting at the end of August. Uh, to kind of provide what's been submitted to Conservation and then as an update. And then either we could figure out if that's a point to, you know, vote on it with. The conditions of conservation proven it, uh or if we need to wait for their approval. So I leave that to you all to decide that next steps.
And just so you are aware, um, our next meeting is July twenty third. But it looks like you're trying to target something in August, and then trying to target with Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
We have meetings, I, as I see it, as I understand it, August thirteenth and August twenty seventh.
Yep, so probably the twenty seventh would be appropriate to do an update. Um.
And then after that, our first meeting in September is September tenth.
Okay, so that would be coinciding with Conservation Committee. Uh, maybe, as I know that today, it's uh, that can change, but.
Does that all align from your perspective too, Bill?
Yes, it does.
So I understand that you're asking for a continuance.
Yes, for now, okay.
To the twenty seventh or to the tenth?
I, I would suggest to the twenty seventh to provide a, a more detailed update to this committee, and then we could decide at that point. Um, whether it made sense to continue until the tenth or.
And that, I think that works for the board, um, you, you want any input now from the board at all? Are you looking for any feedback at this time?
Um, there was also, Bill had mentioned the idea of staking out on site, so that you all, if you had a chance could. Get out the spot, so um, I told Bill that I'll stake it out, um. And mark it out as best as I can at some point over the next like week or so, and then I'll uh let him know when that is done, so he can pass that on to the board. Uh, for review.
Okay.
Um, I think you saw tonight how, what the board typically looks like for site plans.
Yep.
For stuff like this, uh, do you have any questions on, on preparation of site plans or something like this?
I don't think so, yeah, I've seen a few examples, uh, and Julia shared a few um as well, so I have uh, I think another reference point to pull that together.
Um, Bill, eh, as I understood, this application is for a special permit. This will not, this type of um discussion does not trigger site plan at this point, does it? Just because it's a small parking area? It's just.
It, 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 they, the site plan, um, I think it's, it's a six and all.
I just want to make sure you have read information for it, I see.
Configuration of, um. See, in all the section. Are you just, you're not expanding the floor area, not at all?
On the property, right, no, right, facility.
And, um. No, uh, well, that's a good question. In all districts, now, you're saying now you, you would add. This is tough, because it's, it's a downtown overlay district project. The required parking, what do we, again?
One point five.
Is one, no, but so with, and you were proposing four units originally.
Correct, definitely.
So now with three. So we're down what, uh, four and a half? So no, as long, if it, if the board added, no, the answer, the site plan would not be. It would.
I mean, there's, there's lowercase site plans to show special permit criteria. But this doesn't trigger cap- capital letter site plan review.
That's, no, no, not as proposed, eh, that's what I'm saying, if there's some change of requirement. Basically, what I'm trying to say is if we're gonna create, i- i- in all districts, if a use creates. The need for five or more parking spaces, other than for a single or two family dwelling unit. So if we're gonna be under five parking spaces, I would say.
Well, we are, right, isn't it?
Five.
What are the, we have uh, it's four and a half, I don't know what constitutes five, but they're already existing, they already have parking existing, right?
Not like, but. Well, I, I, I would say this, I will clarify with Building Commissioner. But I, I don't, I don't wanna, uh, I wanna be, you know. And if we did, we have to, it, it might be a limited site plan review or how we would decide. I certainly wouldn't say that, that, that um a full site plan approval extend to stern. Is appropriate. No, but I, I clarify this with the um. Building Commissioner could work first. But I would say also, right now, I mean, there's, it's a two family now, with what, three parking spaces?
Yeah, I mean, there's three tandem on one side and one.
And, and as a two family, they're not subject to it at all, they, they don't have, they're, this is not even in there, the third kind of triggers it. But. Four and a half would be all that were required, if we built it from nothing at, at one and a half. Your unit, and the D O D, we have four and a half, need four and a half spaces, right? For a building from nothing. Four and a half.
Yeah.
Let's just so, no, I wouldn't check.
Yeah, let's just get, let's make sure that's answered.
You can, can we also make sure that. Everybody's aware of what, um, leave from parking when they get asked?
Well, I'm sorry, what, what?
What, leave from parking when you get asked? It's something like the management's, we don't allow it to get in.
So it's bad idea, we just.
Yeah.
So we may have to add, yeah, when we, when we get the, that, what, what, what Bill's asking for you, is to be specific in. Any relief between questions from the board.
Yes, pardon. Absolutely. Yeah.
Anything else?
No. I think, uh, what I can do, if you could let me know where to stake out some boards and, you know, head over there. I think they appreciate that, and it would help.
Uh, any other questions, comments from the board, Annette, anything, your point of view? Alright, um, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing uh to August twenty seventh. Two thousand twenty four at seven P M.
All second back?
All in favor by roll call, Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Jim? Annette?
Yes.
Thank you, Annette. That's five, so we're continuing to August twenty seventh, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, ready? Okay, let's um, let's turn to item five.
Okay.
Uh, we'll, we will open up a public hearing for fifteen D A T, more digital way. Uh, this is for a business called Positive Care. The application was filed by Positive Care. Um, this is, this has a few different sections of the zoning bylaw that are applicable, section three. Section nine point three and section ten point four, and I'll ask Bill to cover what those are for the point. Uh, here we'll be looking at a, a concept plan to, oh, this is um, to, this ties to the concept plan.
Yeah, it's, so we're, we're, yeah, so. Because this is the M B O D, it's required to be consistent with the.
Um, so, in, in a sense, this is a use for a vet, the vote here will be for a special permit for a use for the veterinary clinic.
That's correct.
I understand it.
That's correct.
Bill, would you mind just briefing the board on our responsibilities tonight, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant?
Yes, the, well, the applicant's here, uh, uh, Dr. Kaluva, this, okay, there. And um, this location was uh previously uh permitted by this board as a special permit. Uh, about, uh, I think a little over two years ago, maybe three years ago. There were several conditions of approval, which I have here, um, this is a change in ownership, um, and uh, the new um. It, the new uh name is, is Positive Care. And uh, we have uh, said Dr. Kaluva is going to um, is file a petition and, and will be. Basically taking over the same spot, um, we've had no uh. Um, citations or any problems of any sort in the past with this location. And um, with that, I'll just leave it, uh, Doctor, are you ready, uh? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mister Kaluva, would you mind identifying yourself with the record, please? And then um, I, I understand you'll have a short presentation for us. Um, Mr. Kaluva, would you mind identifying yourself with the record, please? And then, um, I I understand you'll have a short presentation for us.
Yes, um, my name is, uh, Dr. Farbert Kaluva. I'm a veterinarian, um, currently I own Precision Pet Agent Care in Plainview, Massachusetts, um. I've been. I'm a native of Massachusetts, kind of, I've been practicing for fifteen years. Um, my veterinary clinic was owned by best friends and, uh. It, uh, was sold to corporate about two years ago, and when corporate bought the practice. Um, it's kind of, uh, things fell apart. And it's been vacant for close to a year now, and, uh. Myself and two other veterinarians have come together to bring back that service to the local community. And, uh, we're not changing anything, every, they left everything intact, we're not doing any modifications. We're not doing any construction on the inside, we're just changing the logo on the building. And bringing in computers and just continuing the work that was done before.
Um, okay, thank you, Mr. Kaluva. Um, Bill, if this is, uh, we would, we do need to cover here. Um, what the special permit criteria is, of course, this is. This is a new application, so we, we do need to enter onto record what.
That's correct.
What all, all, you know, the typical details we would see, um, were you, were you anticipating do that tonight?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yes, I, and I based it on the, um, let me, I'm going to, uh, bring up the previous, um. Approval here, and when we make. Shared. So this was the, uh, board's approval of, what do we do this? Twenty twenty two. Um. A- and I don't think, as we said, I don't think a lot has, never, nothing's changed except the name. Um, but what we're looking for in this is approval, uh, with the concept is approved. Uh, by town meeting. Um, and this is, uh. And then the special permit criteria for this. Um, here's how it was met, uh, in the previous. Permit, and there's an N B O. Uh, deep criteria, which is only that, um, a veterinary clinic. Um. Is, uh, allowed by special permit, um, requires special permit in the N B O D. Um, these, so what, what's considered, um, were these, the, the, the standard, uh. Uh, state requires special permit criteria, the board also had, uh, several conditions. Um. Here and and I asked the doctor also if he's, uh. Of familiar to these, and he had been, I had spoken previously, but the conditions were that six months, uh. Uh, we had no problems with pet waste, uh, which had with the, um, management company, there's been no problems at all. Uh, the, uh. Pets or animals, uh, are not gonna be walked on the exterior of the property. Uh, and, um. No boarding other as a medical necessity, uh, nothing will be, uh, nothing. Uh, no pets or animals housed overnight without an attendant present. Um, so that was. What we did in twenty twenty two.
Um, can we start there with the, with the, uh, the conditions? Can you, can you scroll down against the conditions? So what, the first condition is what, what exactly?
We, we were at the time, the, the condition was, or concern was raised. Uh, that, um, there would be problems with pet waste. People, you know, it was the idea was, well, people are gonna be walking their dogs or cats or whatever they do. In the area and leaving dog waste. Um, so man, at the time, um, we had a six month. Um, check in and, uh, we have checked, uh, repeatedly with. With the, uh, property manager, had no, no problems whatsoever with that, with pet waste. Um, the walking of pets. Um, the animals in the exterior. Areas of subject property, I don't remember how our discussion went with that exactly, I can't. Remember, this was, maybe we were all on board and. Or, but, um. And then the, um, the boarding was an issue because of, um. At the time, the board was concerned about noise and stuff, since the cattle, um. Or the, uh.
Daycare.
Dog was. Yeah, um, that's, you may wanna modify that, but I, but there's, they, I don't think the. The apple was, was confined with all these conditions if the board still wants or has anything else, so.
And so I, I know we're trying to match this to a previous special permit. Um, we, we just need to ensure, the board needs to hear how, um, how this particular application will. On record, how it meets the special permit criteria, right?
Yeah, well, I think that would be, that, that we could, um.
So I, and what I, what I'm trying to say is, we just. You know, I, I know this board has experienced very specifically with a previous special term that's similar to this, we, we still need to. Look at it as we would any other special permit and go through the special permit criteria.
Sure.
Do you wanna walk us through the special permit criteria and how, how the staff thinks it meets it?
Well, social economic community needs, uh, this was a popular veterinary clinic in the first place. It's sort of, eh, eh, at, at right now, but there is no vet. In the community, now we, we have a community now with over. What, two hundred, pushing five hundred residents in there, I guess. Uh, and her wells, the surrounding area, it was very popular, I think it was. I don't know why, but I think it was popular with cat owners particularly, the previous owner, but, uh. So that community need is, is, uh, clearly not, uh, traffic law and safety is unaffected, um. This is part of, this is part of a master planned, um. Project, uh, I don't think that they, uh. Uh, the, the uses anticipated for that. Location have changed and as were originally approved. I would say that that was, um, there's not eh, any difference in that. Adequacy of utilities, public services, there's adequate. Um. Uh, service for that site. Character is social structures, uh, this, again, this was a, a, a master planned community that. Anticipated of commercial uses in that location. It's an appropriate use, uh, impacts the natural environment, pet waste, uh, in this case have not been an issue, and there are proposed. Uh, condition that safeguards act, the board. Uh, wish me to, uh, you know, periodically check in, we could add that as a condition as well with the property management company, although. They run a very, uh, uh, tight ship with that sort of. Uh, exterior impact, uh, fiscal impact, uh, it's going to, um. Be a positive asset for the tax or accountants' tax base, potential employment, uh, I don't anticipate the anticipated. Uh, additional demands of services from having this occupied from an empty medical office, which it is now. Um, and I would, um. Would think that that pretty much covers all this, it's, it's a. You know, if, if this hadn't been a change of ownership. And, um, eh, eh, you know, a new business, eh, the, the business presumably still be there from twenty twenty two.
Okay, um, Dr. Kaluva, would you mind, um, just discussing your sort of, um, operational plan, specifically? What your hours of operation will be, um, you know, how many, you know, how many animals do you expect to see in a day? Where do they enter, where do they exit, that type of thing, can you do that for us, please?
Sure, sure, thank you. Um, yes, so our hours of operation will be, uh, Monday through Friday, um, will operate from. Between ten A M. And nine P M, depending on the day of the week, we'll start with a shorter hours when it open. Then we'll extend for the evening, evening hours. As we get bigger, just to cater for people after work to be able to come in. Uh, the place does have, uh, a rule that, uh. No business should be open, I think after ten P M, so we, we will follow that rule, I think. There's no day we're gonna go above that regardless of that. Um, in terms of, uh. How we attend the traffic, so. As part of the care we provide for general practice and for sick visits. Uh, patients come in and we want to treat them as quick as possible, so they go, and we, um. We will not, uh, uh, we've been told, and it's been made clear that we tell the owners who have the signage there that, uh. They should know, there's no dog walk outside, sometimes we wanna make sure it's, it's the clients, that when they come in. We inform them and we'll have that on the website that, uh, they should not walk dogs outside, that it worked well with the previous clinic. And we're gonna continue that because there is, uh, I think a reservation on the, on that side that we wanna protect that. So we'll follow that guidance, uh, in terms of, uh. And traffic, the building is, uh, is at the end, uh, of the, uh, complex and, uh. Um, the. Management company has kind of told us where we will let the clients park, so we are not. Uh, causing any traffic to maybe people come to Planet Fitness or other places, so. We will kind of make very clear before they come, if you park, you wanna park on the extreme side, so we'll make sure everything streamlined. And then, uh, in terms of, uh, um, taking care of our animals, we understand the next. A part of the building is not occupied and, uh. Um, we, we own a clinic that's in a plaza at this point, so we understand the importance of noise, so we'll make sure that we do not create. Noise for any of our neighbors or people walking by, and that's already. Part how we have designed the building where the exam rooms for the dogs. Will be on the left side of the building when you enter, because that's not abating the. Next neighbor, just in case the dog can be loud, we don't want to disturb there, so we have all those in place to take care of. Expectance that we don't disturb our neighbors, should that building next to us get occupied, so we'll put all this in place to kind of prepare for the business. Does that answer part of your questions?
Um. What types of deliveries do you anticipate, uh, for the business?
Yeah, so for the, the, the business, for the most part is through, um, just medications, so. U P S, I think the biggest, uh, kind of deliveries will be. Food products, like food bags and things like that, but most of those will come in through the, uh, uh, they're coming through the front entrance, so. Um, most of them would do not require special delivery, um. Uh, the biggest part of the delivery would be the X ray machine when it's put in, but that's put in before the clinic opens and, uh. Um, there should, there should be no, we're not gonna stop any affecting anybody's work while we have our deliveries done.
The, the X ray machine is not for opera, that, that's coming before you open up the business, correct?
It's correct.
That, you know, that's, that's not part of our discussion today, um. Can you, can you update the board on, um, how you plan to manage waste, both, um, say. Regular business waste, but also any type of animal waste?
Correct, so, uh, because we're not boarding, so we keep, these patients come in either for vaccines or they come in for the sick visits. We're not keeping these patients for an extended period of time, uh, like they do in, in emergency, whether stay overnight or periods of time. We, um, we, we, for in terms of, uh. Um, waste that's medical, we, we use Stericycle, so Stericycle is a company that just does medical waste, so they do the needles. They do the excess medications, so they'll come and pick that up. Usually they pick it up between two to three months, depending on how much things accumulate, so we'll take care of the medical waste in that sense, and, uh, OSHA has. Limits on how we can kind of even manage that, so we follow that guidance in terms of, uh, medical waste, uh, in terms of, uh. Uh. Dog droppings and just the, the dog, if dogs go into the bathroom in the clinic, we'll clean that hygienically and, uh, I'll dispose it appr- appropriately. Uh, in, into the, uh. Or the waste bins that will be appropriate for the, uh, dog waste.
And you, you'll keep all waste inside until it's ready for pickup?
Yes, we keep all the, all the waste stays inside until it's ready for pickup, correct? The special packaging for, uh, like for the. Medical waste, it goes in red containers, when the red containers are full, they go into brown containers, and then you'll put a yellow bag and then a red tag, so there's. Especially where you have to target, eh, depending on what it is.
Um, Bill, those are on the outside of the property, or is there signage regarding, um. Current signage on the property for, say, um. Eh, to, to help with operation control at all?
For what?
Um, is, is I recall, there might be signage on the property that says. Do not allow your, your animal to use the grass here and stuff like that.
There was, eh, we put that on last.
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Kaluva, would you mind just telling us what the outside signage is that will be maintained?
So the, oh, so. Hmm, I don't know if you're familiar with the building, so it's at the end of the complex. And where the complex is, there's a walkway behind into the back, where the, towards the school, where the school is, and behind there, there's a, a reservation. And, uh, uh, there is notices just along that wall, along the, there's a fenced in yard. Where if you're coming approaching that for the, even for the owners of the dogs that live on the complex, I think there's a, uh, close to. Over, um, a hundred complex, how does they, they, they know not to walk their dogs, if they walk their dogs, then they have to pick up their waste because it's a reservation. And even behind the building where we, we will not. Bring our patients outside because there's no need for us to bring them outside to use the bathroom, so we, that takes care of that, we will not. They'll not be brought outside to walk, we don't have to walk them because they are there for care and then they go back home.
Um, Dr. Kaluva, do you agree to maintain all the signage that's, that was part of the previous special permit?
Yes, sir.
Right. Um. I think those are my questions at the moment, I'll turn over to the rest of the board for additional questions. Um. Yeah, Annette, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Um. Good afternoon, Mr. Kaluva, I am, um, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to remember if I did ask the same question. On the last meeting with the previous owners about, I believe you guys had an air conditioning, soundproof. Room for the, for your pets. To put them in as they were being held.
Um. Have, uh, uh, I, I do not know about that, I have no idea about that, but. What we have, there is, the, the rooms closest to that, that. Uh, bordering the other premises will not be used for dogs, so that's, that's, that was one of the things we fixed upfront because. Uh, we don't wanna do that, and, uh. We, there, there is a room in there, I'm not sure what they used it for, it's, it's a quiet room, they had cages in there, I don't, maybe they had used it for that. Uh, if they need that.
I believe there, I think there was, um, a, a soundproof, I'm not sure if the board remembers, but.
It's still, it's still there, and I know what you mean, I, I don't know the, eh, if they used it like that, I know what the room you're talking about, yes.
And, and it's also air conditioned for the pets.
Yes, it is air conditioned, yes.
Thank you.
Um. Mr. Kaluva, the three conditions that were part of the previous special permit, are you amenable to keeping those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um. I'll open it up to public comments for tonight.
Yes, that's me, so, so yes, I came, um.
I'm sorry, I just didn't get a question.
Again.
Yeah.
Very good, I was in one, I think, the card. Um. I got the thing in the mail and I was, um, primarily interested in the special conditions as we met, and I wanted to see that. That these were maintained from our previous discussions, um, on the facility. And, um, so that's, that was my primary purpose for being here. Um, I'm glad, you know, that, I, my daughter has a cat, so I'm glad that, she lives on, on Brown Street, so I'm glad that we have a veterinary. Kind of coming back, I did have a question, I know, and I was looking at my phone for that. And I, and I mentioned, I thought there was, next, I thought we had a big meeting. And it was gonna be co, uh, we had like a pet daycare going to be beside the veterinary, but that doesn't appear to be there. Right, or was that?
Uh, it's permit.
It's primitive.
Right, it hasn't been, I don't.
But it hasn't been.
No.
Yeah, I, I don't, we can't.
Those were the same conditions.
Yeah, we can't control how fast construction gets done.
No, no, I just couldn't mention the next door neighbor, and I'm like, huh, I thought it, but no, but, and, and, and there was a big discussion. On that permitting too, so it was related and similar, the same, and so I, they shouldn't be different, can special conditions.
The, every. The every, that every special permit may have different conditions because that's a different business and may have different mitigation required. As I recall, that special permit had more conditions about noise control and things like that.
It's fit because of the population.
Right.
But I'm just saying that the outdoor conditions were.
And and um Doctor Kula.
Has agreed.
Has agreed, and I believe this board agrees to carry those conditions forward. So, um, any, any public comments online, Bill?
Uh, no, it's just us.
Okay, um, any any addition, additional questions from the board? You know, Mister Kula, anything to add before we close?
Actually, um, when we came to the town hall and we went through those, uh, actually, we. Actually, we hold those values uh to ourselves because uh there's a conservation right there. We'll make sure we prepare, we protect that land and. We educate our clients to make sure we follow that, and we are happy to maintain those stipulations. And um I'm happy if you wanna have the six months in the stipulation to follow up with us, whatever requires. Uh, to make these things work, we'll we'll make it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Kula. We will continue the six-month standard. It's a quick, simple check-in. Um, it probably won't take much of your time, but it's al- it's always good just to check in to say hello. And I checked in with the property manager to see if there's any issues.
Please, please come by.
Thank you, Doctor Kula. I'll make a motion to close the hearing. Sorry about that. All in favor to close the hearing uh by roll call, Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, that's five zero to close the hearing. Um, I'll, and Bill Numzer, there's three sections that are listed here um for the zoning bylaws that reference section. Section, what is section three?
Protection three is the use table.
Um, the use table. Section nine point three, is that the special overlay district?
Yeah, nine point three is the um M D O D.
And neighborhood business overlay.
Right, neighborhood business overlay district. And then um three point out is the um. Uh, use uh. Regulations and um. Nine point four is the uh special permit criteria that we went over earlier.
Uh, I'll make a motion to find that the application is consistent with the special permit criteria in ten point four. That is con- that's uh consistent with the concept plan. Approved at town meeting on October fifth, two thousand sixteen is referenced in section nine point three. And that's consistent with section three point zero of the use table. Um, and that the special permit will have three conditions that are that were discussed and listed tonight's. That's it.
I'll sorry about that.
Any discussion from the board? All in favor of the most for special term of approval um by roll call, please, Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
And that's five zero for approval of the special permit. Thank you, Doctor Kula, and we wish you the best of luck.
Everyone on the board, thank you, the community.
Thank you.
Doctor, I'll be in touch. Um, I'm going to draft the decision for you. Um, and we'll get it filed. Uh, with the clerk. There's a twenty-day appeal period, and I'll explain that to you in my email.
Thank you so much.
But uh it should be uh no problem getting you um your decision done shortly to get it filed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Jim, you wanna do the honors?
I'm sorry.
You'll do the honors to close the hearing?
Yes, uh, Mister Chairman, I would like to uh uh make a mark in the forward three year meeting.
Here. Close the hearing.
Open hearing, I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion to close the hearing. All in favor, Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Thank you. That's five zero to close the hearing.
Back to the heat.
Thank you. All right, let's turn to item one, meeting minutes. We have meeting minutes from May twenty eighth and June one. That's correct. Um, a a a question after we go through that, I'll I'll explain. Uh, the June eleventh meeting was a little different format.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like it. Can we make it into minutes instead of with transcript?
Oh, yeah, we can, uh, but this, the the question, well. Yeah, it says, is it the boards? We did this, um, the June eleventh minutes I I are done. With a combination of A I, which we have here, and we're trying to see if it's more efficient, you know, to get the minutes done quicker. And things like that, but it it gives a different feel altogether. So I I I, but. That's why um we weren't sure with the board.
You know, I, I do not like. Artificial transcriptions.
Well, no, it's it's impersonate, but they're keeping format that comes in. I mean, they're they're not, it's not. It's the same. Uh, minutes taker, but they use it as the base, but I I understand, I understand.
Well, um, let's turn to May twenty eighth minutes. Any comments on May twenty eighth? I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four. Sorry about that. Anyone need more time? Uh, all in favor for the meeting minutes approval for May twenty eighth, by roll call, Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Okay, Bill, um, for the June eleventh, it looks like you had, this is the one you're referencing that you had some help with A I.
Yeah, we 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 look. We're trying to reduce our costs, everything, and and so since we have the service. We use the transcript service and sent that as a um to the. Um, transcriber along with the video, uh, hoping that it would speed it along well. I didn't. I I mean, I I don't wanna get your thoughts on it, you know, your guys' thoughts. Bill doesn't like it.
Well, they wouldn't need the video if they have the transcript, but regardless, they need to consolidate in the mid minutes.
Would you like me just to redo this? I'm gonna redo this and see how this is, it's fine.
It's a new ones, three pages.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I wanna help.
Yeah.
With our, I wanna minimize our efforts, and I think the way we can is to shorten. Our minutes overall.
I would agree.
Right? So. You know, I I think the minutes are supposed to be a a very brief summary of the discussion. We have video re- recordings of all our hearings.
That's correct.
That has the details, so, you know, I think one way we can reduce our cost is to. Um, have a more, a more abbreviated summary of our meeting minutes. Does that make sense on board?
Hmm. Yeah, I mean, it's like, you take half the time to do the minutes, you. You already have a transcript to start it and scroll through the damn meeting.
Yeah, I mean, Bill.
It's terrible.
Bill, if this helps you start the process and then you use this to consolidate it, I'm fine with that. But it definitely needs a human touch.
Yeah, understood. Well, this had the human touch.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, but but we got, but I can, I I the and and they were not sure, and I said, well, let's let's try like this one.
Yep.
My suggestion would be if they, well, we could do two ways. We we can do these and let them go, cause certainly capture everything. Uh, but if you want me to redo them, we can do that too. But in the future, I understand what the board wants.
Yeah, so like, for example, um, the opening statement has public carrying. Fourteen to sixteen hillside street, and it says Mister Arsenal, and then it just reiterates my opening message, you know. You know, we, stuff like that, you need to, and stuff like that. Um, obviously, cut down on on the back and forth.
Right.
Um, you know, things like meeting.
Oh, yes.
Meeting is continued to whatever date, we don't need to reiterate the discussion. So that's all. Yeah. Later update?
Um, let's see, well, as you know, uh, Julie had her baby, um. Uh, let's see, we have, um, oh, I sent you all the the. I ain't, oh my god. Reasibility analysis for our um. Powdermill overlay district, I I E F A. Uh, so they kind of split the difference, as you saw, with our affordable numbers. Um, that was pretty interesting. Um.
Well, that should be trying to do a zoning amendment on the phone.
What's that? Sorry?
We wanna do that zoning change on the phone.
Which one? The the new districts?
Make it consistent with our findings of that.
No, we wrote it so we could, remember?
No, but we just wrote a bunch of gibberish and said, whatever. Now we have real numbers.
No, 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 we said, no, we we had legal do it so we could just pop it in. That was still, that was specific. I spoke with them since as well. We put, it said that uh the highest number allowed by E F F A, according to the um, the fiscal analysis, you know.
What Bill's saying, he knows what he's saying is that. Do we need to update the zoning now to say exactly what the number is instead of just referencing the?
Oh, no, we're gonna update, sure, yeah, we don't need to go to town meeting for that. No, no, that's what I did, so we could, we're we're just gonna, we will plug in what is the highest number, yeah. And the percentage, that was done deliberately for that, yeah. Well, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna update the zoning bylaws for sure. We've got a lot to do with that, but it it's not approved yet, but. Once the Attorney General does, we will uh update that, then we have to send it to um. E O E A.
Executive Office.
Stay, yeah, yeah, E O H A. Um, to make sure that our area, we 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 have plenty of area, I spoke to them. Uh, they're gonna, they wanna discount. Um, they wanna take out. I think uh. Like less than an acre of what one there, they said we kept it. So we're gonna, we'll do that, but it's gonna be well over our. We'll be well over, or we'll be fine.
That did not change.
Nothing changed.
Our, the applicability of this of the district.
It did not, we still need the criteria.
No, did not.
So, the, in conclusion, are we able to insert? Change of the upper end threshold of fifty, like the report said? Can we do that when I'll go back to town meeting?
Wow.
Cause it's consistent.
I don't think so. With with maybe a misunderstanding.
Report said that, you know, anything, you know, our numbers, once it got past fifteen-ish. Our percentages were too high, but those percentages would work at a fifty threshold. So, can we just change our number from whatever fifteen seventeen to whatever to fifty? Keep our twenty-five percent threshold. I'll I'll.
Check it out. I'll check this out.
Fifty units. There's, yeah, okay, you have, you require twenty-five percent affordable when it's twenty units, like, that's not. But if it was a fifty unit thing, it would. So can we just change our twenty threshold?
Like so.
Well, it's consistent with the findings of the economic study. And it's the maximum we can do.
I'll I'll ask it.
So like we told town meeting.
I'll ask this.
Well, we're gonna go back to town meeting for the the rest of the P M O B, it's important.
Yeah, that's true, that's almost, so.
It's not a heavy one to add that.
Oh, that's the, that's the other body mentioned that. Uh, the other thing is that the Conservation Commission. Has asked for a uh. Meeting with the chairs, they to go over uh. Read that up school, which I explained that this is a Dover amendment. You know, it's just one limited stuff that's gonna be under this, um, we can, yeah, what often powderball overlay, you know, come to changes. So they wanna. Well, you know, they 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 wanna make sure we address any concerns, so it's been, so it's a little bit, it's a bit.
Um, have we, have you or Natalie started any work on the other zoning proportions?
Yeah, we've been playing a little bit with it. One thing we identified is. Taking out a couple of sections that. Are good, well, who's one, like a bicycle parking park. Probably couldn't take that out if it applied county-wise, because A, it's a good idea, and B. It kind of is a bird, extra cost to just apply it to the family, just kind of the opposite. Uh, so that's a pretty simple. Change that could come to.
Do you have a sense of when you guys wanna come back to discuss with this board? Maybe.
Oh, yeah, 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 that'd be fine if we have an easy. We can come back then.
So, one of.
Oh, we can go back with the update, well, we can go back with the. Bicycle zoning.
Well, nothing's rushing that.
There is, cause town meeting warrant is mid-August.
Well, if you wanna get it on that warrant.
All depends, I mean, how many can warrant on it, what you want in spring. Really, what you gotta do?
How many do I want in the fall?
Also, that reminds me, speaking of changes for us, um. Rick asked me. In our planning, there were rules and regulations, which we can change in a post. We talk about. No sin- about synthetic materials. We say all natural materials. And this is quite simple, a little consternation with like siding and stuff, so for example. Right now, with schools and regs. Yeah, we put that in there, so. I I I wanna make some changes to the rules and regs anyway, we got some, just a little tweaks and stuff. But we, uh, and the reason this came up, cause the outdoor store is doing their side. And um they're using saying, stop, but we say it's gotta be. Natural.
Yeah, and it's like, well, what is natural?
Right, right, and so, and what is synthetic?
I mean, what what does composite mean?
So, yeah, use wood fibers and elastic together, all same, is that natural now, like?
So, that's something I just can't remind you, Bill said that. There's always.
I have some other.
Actually, the rules and regs, uh, remind me sometimes about powderball zoning. It's, we were wondering if there's some details that could be referenced to our rules and regs, like. Types of trees. Or you have, you know, type of bike rack, sure, instead of logging up there.
Yeah.
Consistent with the guidance in the rules and regs.
Or.
Whatever, and then we could just change that. Whenever we need to change it.
We don't, I don't think we have, we don't bike, uh. We should do that, we don't have, we haven't bike racks.
Yeah, but anyway.
Like we want, people want those ones that we bought from, um, the M A P C style ones that are.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they're still bringing.
We call the cable or whatever. Posts, posts and.
Well, you, I mean, it's basically, you know, a place that you lock the frame and get the wheel.
Yeah, it was pretty common sense stuff, you know, we don't have it. Well, you know, if you look, I really. If somebody's ambitious, we wanted to get, it probably is time to go through the rules right again. And see what's we want, what's not, and some of the stuff is like, it's like it's showing everything there, it's that ended. I think that's how end up the natural. You know, rather than the the intent of it, but like if we said. I don't, I've seen it done, I don't think it would be a bad idea in some cases to use more visual, so it's something. So in the rules and rights, you know, for example, let's just say the bike rack, for example. If you said like a a post and circles on something like this.
Yeah, yeah. It's all picture.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause a, or a, um, can we, can we? Cause uh, or uh, um, can we, can we get grants to help with updating these things, or is that not? Well, I mean, it'd be, what I, you ask me what my ideal version is, is to have. Um, professional support that can modernize the thing based on current best practices, I don't know. What current practices are.
Hmm.
You're too busy to. Do a once over, the whole entire thing adequately, what's needed, so. You know, I don't know. Can we get?
It's possible, I don't know. I can ask for, I mean, I got, I'm asking for a lot of other supplemental.
We, we deserve it, we're doing great work. Hey, we passed the powder mill zoning bylaw for the. You know, for, for the Commonwealth's Community Housing Criteria, by ninety seven percent, we, so we deserve.
No question about, I mean, and what, this board has done. With the last couple of years, so I think good work, we, we deserve support.
So, absolutely, absolutely.
But I want dumpster enclosure standard.
Well, we can get that.
Well, I have them.
And there's pictures of you.
Exactly, yeah, find the perfect one.
I, I like this. And we did that, and, and we, you know, I, you remember the fate of that, well, we could, there'd be time to do it now, let's do it. Cause I had, well, we had, you know, we did.
Let's rip it, because we can use the powder mill zoning to understand what we need to pull out and make. Townwide, instead of just zone, you know, a district wide.
Dumpster stands, and, and we could, we could, you know, we didn't. We, we just give a euphemism for name, so it sounds a little nicer, but, but like, we did, like, you know, did a nice job with them besides some. Just sorry, what's it, just did a nice dumpster training, oh, uh, come on. Well, cause we're worried about it blowing, the stuff blowing in the river, as, and you go there now, that, that did a nice job with it, and looks decent and. But it's, it's one of those things, it's like when you walk by it enough, you don't see it anymore, but the dumpster out, come on.
Yeah.
Stop. Put it little. Um, let's do it.
Okay, let's see if we can get dumpster support.
Come that up. Um, E D C? What?
We get E D C to start advocating for it.
Oh, great, love it.
Yep.
So, if this board wants that, I, I, I'll start that fire.
I, I mean, modernizing, modernizing our standards is gonna help the town. With clarity, it's gonna help town staff. It's gonna help select board with clarity, it's gonna help applicants, and it's gonna help us with our time. So, love it.
We, um, mill manage has changed ownership.
Don't have any details? Before, before, before we change topics.
Yeah.
Um, the, the tree committee asked if uh, they can take a look at our landscape regulations, similar topic? Um, I said yes, and so I would, I'm asking uh, for support from this board if I can attend. A tree committee meeting to discuss the scope of that, um, would, would you guys allow me to?
Represent the board at tree committee for that?
As long as you advocate for canopy. I don't want tall skinny trees, oh, big ass wide one.
I don't think I need to, this is the tree committee, so I don't think I need to, but I will.
We have a good canopy, right?
I will, I will tell, I will, I will advocate for canopy.
Well.
Yeah, that's cool, um, Annette, is that okay with you too, may I approach the tree committee? Yes.
Yes.
I'd zing a thumbs up, so, okay. Thanks, uh, thanks, Annette. Um, okay, so I'm gonna do that, I think they scheduled that beginning of August, so I'm gonna.
Oh, cool.
I'm gonna help them carve out scope, and then we'll get a plan, it's gonna take a while. Um, and, but I'll come back with an update on what the scope of their, their review will be.
That's something we could probably get a technical assistance grant for.
So, we should.
If that, what do you get, let's get, once you get it squared away, and then, you know, what you want, and I'll write. And I'll, I can write up a technical assistance grant, or, you know, people, that's a good way, we like that.
Yeah.
And, and maybe we can, maybe we can nip some stuff in the bud there too.
I fully agree with that, and there might be an opportunity to roll in some climate resiliency stuff with our climate resiliency plans as well. It's cool, so, yeah, I think technical systems would be great. I'll put it because of what it's.
Very cool stuff.
Sorry, you were talking about milling man.
Well, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be meeting with them in the next week or two, they asked for me, I don't know any, I don't know any other details.
Oh, who are they?
I don't know.
You don't even have a name? Okay.
Secret man. Lincoln Properties, they're ma, property manager, and they asked for income. I don't know, yeah, Lincoln has been the property manager.
So, Lincoln's gonna be maintaining as property manager? You don't even know that, okay?
No, I just wanted to tell you, cause it's gonna, it's, it's scuttlebots around, and, and, um. I don't know, you know, uh, we'll know in a week or two, just be patient. And, um, uh, so I met with Beijing Royal today. Again, there are.
I'm sorry, Bill, we're speaking up just a little, how, I, I go near you.
Oh, we met, I met with the Beijing Royal folks today.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's, their plan now is, um, cause the school, they said they really want this school, which is not, doesn't seem it's gonna work, as they told us before. So, um, they're, they're looking at other options, so, there's, but they check in, and I appreciate that, that thing. Uh, you know, so. And, um, the initial select board member I met with today is Lindsay, most of the, a lot of you know, I think probably all know Lindsay McCafee. She's very big, I think she'll be very good, and we, we briefed, I briefed her on this essential, I gave her my list of. Essential planning literature that we have, with our um, rules and regs, or zoning bylaws, blah, blah, blah. And, and gave a little background about the work we're doing, you know, we've been doing on the powder mill, and she's familiar with. Um, she's very good, because uh, coming from capital planning committee as well. So she's familiar with a lot of our stuff, and very addressed in, um, what we're up to. And uh, so that was cool. And I think that's everything I got.
Do you know who the select board liaison to the planning board is right now?
If they're being decided, okay, right now, it's this.
Um, but that could potentially.
Yeah, I, I was at the meeting when they said, and, 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 um. There's, and, and it was, uh, they're, they're, um, what they're doing is changing who has interest in. Being liaisons, does anybody have specific interests? Uh, and I, I, they have a meeting next week, so I guess we'll probably know that.
Um, it's the new fiscal year, do we need to vote? Uh, new chairman, vice chairman?
Yes. And, uh.
Jimmy, Natalie chairman?
Oh, no. Not sure what you can do if it wasn't on the agenda.
Does it get to agenda items?
That's a good question.
Well, we can put on the agenda for next time, but.
Yeah.
But that's, we do that every, beginning of every.
Yeah, 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 we're required. Is required to be on the agenda?
Well, no, all committees are required to.
Oh, yeah, to have a, elect a chair, but it's required to be on the agenda, I didn't, I don't know.
It's a action item.
Um, then we'll put on next week.
Okay. Next week, yeah. We'll make sure that Natalie's the chair.
But I'm gonna.
Next week is listed.
Yeah, here, that's a healthy rhetoric.
Oh, I can text her, and say you've been nominated for chair.
Tell her we voted her chair.
No, I can't do it, so, so my phone be blowing up all night. You what? Huh?
I'll do it.
Oh. Natalie, you okay being chair? I don't think you should do that, she's with her kids at the concert.
Yeah, she's like screaming all the time.
Don't, alright, take my name off of this, and I, I, I'll prank anybody usually.
Is our meeting on?
Um, okay, uh, Jim, would you like to do the, do the honors for us?
I would be happy to, Mr. Chairman, may I make the motion to close the meeting for this evening?
Thank you, Jim, I'll second it, uh, all in favor by roll call, Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Thank you, that's five zero to close for tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody, good evening.
Good night.
Thanks, Annette, have fun in California.
Yes, thank you.
Hope to see you back soon, Annette.
Yes, I'll be back soon, unfortunately. Like to stay here in sunny California.